We'll get started. Tonight is the November regular meeting of the school board. It is November sixth, twenty twenty-three. And I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Hastings, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Richards.
Here.
Ms. Walsh?
Here.
Ms. Higgins?
Here.
Mr. Weinberg?
He will be a little late today. He has notified me.
All right, Mr. Cotton?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Meeker?
Here.
And Mr. Crowdo?
Here.
And I am here, so we're have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hastings. And with that, we'll move on to the second item, which is an approval of the agenda. Does, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walsh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hastings. Does anyone have any additions or changes they would like to make to the agenda? Do we have a non-public is listed as item thirteen? We will have a non-public tonight. With that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The agenda is approved. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. This includes the regular monthly meeting minutes of October second, the Capitol Facilities Meeting October fourth, the Special Board Work Session of October seventeenth, the Finance Committee of October eighteenth, the Communication and Policy Meeting of October twenty-fifth, and the Special Board Meeting for the Budget on October thirtieth. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by, I believe, Ms. Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Crowdo. Other than the comment that we had a lot of meetings this month that I'll make, does anybody have any discussion or comments with regards to the consent agenda? Not seeing any? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda is, has been approved. And with that, we'll go to the part that everybody has been waiting for, and that is a celebration of our schools with, I believe, Superintendent Beaver Meadow School tonight.
That's the, as I said every month, this is the best part of our meeting, right? Because we get a chance to celebrate student learning. And so tonight, we have students from Beaver Meadow School along, I think they've brought quite a few guests with them. I see the parents out there. And I think that our principal, Mrs. Vance, is going to begin introductions.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for inviting us here tonight. Mrs. Mahaney, Brittany Mahaney, our new assistant principal this year, and I are very, very proud of these students. And they're going to showcase some learning here in our second year of implementation of our Fly Five Social Emotional Learning. So right behind you, we do have a little bit of a presentation. We wanted to highlight a few things, but we also wanted to include some of our teachers' voices as part of the presentation, and then our children will be doing a bit of a share.
That's okay.
It's so quiet.
They're all very good.
Yeah.
Canva has a mind of its own. It's such a pain in the neck. It's not you, it's the software.
I think it's probably the internet is a little sore here than the school, so it's just taking a little bit of time.
Friends, while we're waiting for that, would you like to stand up and introduce yourself? And then as soon as he's ready to present, we can share with that. Would you like to start? And then stand up, introduce yourself, say your name, and what grade you are in, and then we can pass him off.
Hello, my name is Levi. I'm in fifth grade at Beaver Meadow School. I'm in Ms. Williamson's class.
Oh, Levi, I think you might.
All we needed was Levi.
All we needed was Levi. Say a few words. Thank you, Levi.
You did it.
So we'll have audio. No audio? Okay.
Next.
I'm Naomi, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, everybody, I'm Sadie. I'm in fifth grade in Ms. Brosley's class.
Hi, I'm Avery. I'm in fifth grade. I'm in Ms. Williamson's class.
Hi, my name is Emma, and I am in Ms. Morgan's class.
Hi, my name is Kealan, and I'm in Ms. Mulligan's class.
Hello, my name is Grayson, and I am a fifth grader in Ms. Williamson's class.
Hi, my name is Dawn. I am in third grade, and I'm in Ms. Conway's class.
I'm Jordan, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, I'm Brock, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Morgan, and I'm in Ms. Blaine's class.
First grade.
Hi, my name is Ethan, and I'm in fifth grade in Ms. Williamson's class.
Well, welcome. We're happy to have you here.
Yeah. Thank you so much. If we don't have sound, we can make this work. We promise you that.
No pressure.
You want to share with Jack?
I can try that, but he doesn't have camera.
Okay.
It's like Adobe made easy. It's amazing. Until the internet doesn't work.
And we didn't get a chance to introduce. This is Katie Cannard. She is our Digital Learning Specialist Program Assistant that is helping us tonight. It's gonna work.
It's gonna, it's totally gonna. It might be a good idea. Just like when and down reboot it.
It's okay, Katie. It's okay. All right. Can we just, can we do the present like that? It's okay. No worries. So at Beaver Meadow School, we're very proud, and we wanted to showcase the learning of not only our students, but also our teachers. So this is our second year for implementation for our social emotional program is called Fly Five. And so recently, what we did at a staff meeting is I actually interviewed, well, asked the teachers, share with us a little bit for the school board, what you have learned through the professional development and from teaching Fly Five. And so there are five problems of practice that are embedded in Fly Five. And these are the five problems of practice that we are focusing on when we're trying to build our students' skills and competencies and knowledge around social emotional learning. And so up at the top in the blue, those are the problems of practice. And the bullets right there are the pieces that our classroom teachers have highlighted as areas that have impacted their teaching from using this program and then also from the professional development. Our first year, each year is ten hours of professional development that our teachers are doing. So they really have highlighted a need for structure, time, patience, and guidance. There's a framework that fits into a school year for teaching and learning. It is connected, it is embedded throughout the day. They find it to be very natural. Children come in from a recess, and there's a moment for teaching and learning, and they can connect a lesson immediately into the needs of the student in that very moment. Sorry. Okay, and then student engagement, they're highlighting pieces here. There's components in the program. They have these scenario cards, they have these mindfulness cards. We have two students tonight that are going to model for you one of our mindfulness moments. We have common language across our entire school in each of our tiers, our tier one, our tier two, our tier three. But even the common language is going outside into our encore teachers all the way across the school. Again, I mentioned something about the authentic situations. Children are learning when they're interacting with one another, and then they are also learning all those foundational skills that they are being exposed to in the school, but also utilizing outside of the school. Again, they're highlighting, one of the things that the teachers loved was the common language, that it teaches the size of the problem. Students are learning all those different tools that they can use. And then again, the vocabulary is very, very strong in this program, and it's something that they highlighted again and again, and all the deepening of the understandings of the concepts and sharing all their own experiences, which they're going to get a chance to do in just a moment. When we had made this, the teachers were actually reading this for you, so I'm sorry.
You're doing a great job.
I know. And we had it all. Anyway, we'll share it with you all later. If you have Canva, you can listen to it. The family engagement piece is another very, very strong piece. We have newsletters and activities where we can extend the learning from our school and our classrooms into our students' homes. It's building lots of opportunities for our students to extend on their tools and their toolbox of real-world experiences and talking about cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, all of those pieces that tie in with the castle competencies, but also with the cares. And equally as important is the well-being for our staff, okay? So they are very happy with the professional development they have received. Tomorrow is another day of professional development, and many of our teachers are finalizing some of the year-two components. We recently had a Fly Five presenter from the company come to one of our staff meetings and share ideas, different strategies and things like that, and then all the collaboration within our PLCs that has been happening. Okay. Okay. They're going to get into their spots and just share a little bit more with you.
Last year, our school introduced.
They're so cute.
Last year, our school introduced Fly Five Social Emotional Learning. One favorite memory we wanted to share with you was our Soccer World Cup. For encore class, we went to the gym where we played soccer and were divided into teams. Each team represented a different Soccer World Cup soccer team.
During this time, we focused on our five competencies for Fly Five: cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. Our encore teachers were looking for which class was demonstrating these competencies, and they handed out many trophies to the teams.
The trophies were printed on our school's 3D printers. We were able to display them in our classrooms for the whole year. It was such an amazing event and a great way to connect our Fly Five learning.
This year at Beaver Meadow School, we have expanded Fly Five and created a new focus called BMS Cares. BMS Cares is directly related to Fly Five, however, it's personalized for our school and students. It stands for cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control.
As a whole school, we have been learning about cares and applying it. It's a clear and easy way of understanding our competencies that Fly Five focuses on. For the first five weeks of school, during our morning announcements, we introduced each letter and shared a miniscape each day.
After five weeks, we started BMS Cares. Teachers, staff, and students began noticing when someone has gone above and beyond demonstrating one of the cares.
Those students are then nominated to receive the BMS Cares Award. Any students that are nominated receive an award. Their picture is displayed in our TV in the main lobby, and they are recognized at our all-school meeting.
Hi, my name is Kealan.
Hi, my name is Emma.
And we're going to show you how to do volcanic breaths.
Wipe your hands together.
We didn't like the tree pose. I don't.
As a school, we have been working really hard to show our understanding of Fly Five. I wanted to show with all the things that our students are doing. Here is a photo of our third-grade team in one of the reunion sessions.
What you're seeing here is one of our third-grade teachers reading one of the our social emotional books with the entire third-grade classroom. And as they're doing a read aloud, they're having conversations and discussions about all of the social emotional competencies that are embedded in Fly Five. And you can see how engaged in it is, and she's doing it with the entire third-grade classroom at the same time. And the other teachers are also there. That's what you're witnessing there.
The cool thing about this program as well is that the teachers are able to talk with the students throughout the process. So one thing that sadly you're missing is the student engagement with it, where the teacher's then talking and asking like, oh, what can you do in these situations? And one thing they are going to show you in a second, we can at least watch it, is they talk about a mindful moment that we just did, which you just take deep breaths and you count down your fingers. And the entire class does it with her, and it's really amazing, and I'm really glad that we were able to highlight this for you. So that could be a strategy to kind of when you go left, is it take a walk? Okay. A little deep breath. So that kind of brings us back to what's up here. So if you take a look at the board, these are some things that they suggest when things are feeling that overwhelming and you just want things to feel right, there's some ways you can help go left. So the first one is regulate your breathing. So somebody said, we can do that breathing. So let's just do for, we'll do all together one time. We're going to go into our nose and out to our mouth. We're going to count to ten. Ready? I'll do it on my finger. Ready? It's really quiet. Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Our kindergarten and fifth graders would like to share about one of our encore classes. We have a playwork session with Mrs. Bean, where we focus on our cares in every class. Here's a short video of our kindergartners and one of the games they learned in class, which they ended up wanting to play during their recess time.
All right, ready? Nothing is coming! So one thing that's really awesome is Miss Bean does a lot of cooperation games with her kiddos. So she's, we're lucky, she's working with our kindergartners and our fifth graders, and she does an amazing job really integrating all the Fly Five into an actual play base, so the kids really love it. What do you think of playworks with Miss Bean? You like to dance? What else do you like? You play games with Miss Bean? You like the swings? You like the jump ropes?
And helicopter.
Oh, look at all those thumbs! That's amazing! I'm so glad you have so much fun!
Here is what some of our fifth-grade students have to say about playworks.
I don't think the audio is going to work on this sadly, but I did have four fifth-grade students come down, and I asked them, just plain, what do you think about playworks? And some of their responses were, they really liked that Miss Bean would ask them what they wanted to play, and that it really encouraged them to invite other people. They always are focused on, how do we include everyone into our games? How can we be kind? How can we be caring? And how can we cooperate? And they wanted to say that they, one of our students said that it lifted up the other students to really feel positive, the affirmations, and that they really enjoyed this opportunity to collaborate and work together. They said, they have a motto that after every game that they play, it's good job, nice try. So it's encouraging that you don't always have to win or be the number one to have an awesome opportunity, and they're really working on how to lift each other's spirits up and to really have a great time together and play.
Thank you for inviting us to come and share what we have learned from Fly Five at Beaver Meadow School.
Thank you all for coming to our meeting and sharing your Fly Five. I think I saw a lot of the school board members taking deep breaths, breathing in and breathing out. And so maybe that's something we can learn from you and we can do here. So, thank you.
Thanks. It takes a lot of bravery to stand up in front of a bunch of adults and do that, and you guys did an awesome job. So thanks very much for being here with us tonight.
Does any of the other board have any questions or any comments for our Beaver Meadow students?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Proud of you guys.
Thank you so much.
Great job, and we hope you come back. As, as interesting as our meeting is, we'll take a brief recess so that if the parents want to go home.
Recession. We don't blame you.
You're welcome to stay, but if you want to go home, you can, you may be able to take your students home. They have a big day of school tomorrow.
No, they don't.
Oh, they don't? They're off tomorrow.
They have a big day of playing tomorrow.
They have a big day of play tomorrow. You're right. Thank you. Well, Superintendent, the only way you can follow a display by students like that is to follow it up with some students, I think, so... I think we'll go straight to our report.
Thank you. That was smooth, Jim.
Yeah, thank you. So, Sophia and Van, what do you have for us this month?
Really, so I'm saying it's great to see everybody, and this month at CHS, we're looking forward to having a nice and short month. We only have seventeen school days because we have voting, Veterans Day, and Thanksgiving break. November and October have been the end of all fall sports for everybody, student athletes, and the golf team just won their state championship a couple of weeks ago.
Congratulations to them.
And we look forward to starting winter sports towards the end of the month. And in school today, we had some visitors from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. As you most likely know, this is part of our school accreditation process, and they were just like hopping into classrooms, seeing what was going on. And today, on Friday, we also had our school pictures, which was very effective this year, and only took like ten minutes out of class time. And with the end of quarter one being last Friday, a question that's been on my mind is how we will be receiving grades, because since COVID-19, we've all, everything's been on teacheries and power school. However, this year, starting in the second semester, or at the end of the first semester and second semester, we're getting physical report cards again through the mail, which will be showing our like four-point grades, also our Crimson Culture grades, and a report on everyone's attendance. And this will also still be available online. And the purpose that I have sold behind this is for physical report cards, is to make the information more accessible for all the families. Thanks. I'd like to turn it over to Sophia.
Good evening, everyone. We have quite a busy November at CHS, even with all the days off of school. With the end of quarter one, as Van mentioned, and the possession of our report cards, parent and teacher conferences will be occurring on November sixteenth and the twentieth. These can be in-person or over Zoom. Win Days have been permanently implemented in all five-day weeks. Just as a reminder, our Win Days are what I need, so they're a four-to-five-minute period on Fridays for students to sign up for different activities with their teachers or receive extra help. I have heard from many students that these are extremely helpful, especially with the end of the quarter, to get remediation or reassess on anything they need to. We have also recently concluded our senior one-act performances, so if you went, they were awesome this year. Our senior one-acts, for those that don't know, are one act of a play that a senior directs all by themselves. And they are all either written, or they can choose their own. I think three out of the four this year were self-written, and they were amazing. This week, we also have a volleyball tournament hosted by the junior class. A little shout-out for Van's class. And then for the senior class, of course, I have to mention them, we are having a hypnosis show this Thursday at 7:00 PM in the CHS auditorium. It'll be $5 at the door. It's supposed to be really fun, so... And for elementary school reports, we're gonna be doing those monthly, as I mentioned. We're gonna have two fifth graders from Abbott Downing School give us a report every month, and I will be sharing that with you. So at Abbott Downing, they had, recently had a PTO's Walk-a-Thon. In October, the whole school went for a mile-long walk to raise money for the PTO, which is the parent-teacher organization, which funds field trips and other school events like the Color Run. Students also got apples after the walk. They also, October was also Fire Prevention Month for them. Firefighters from the Concord Fire Department Broadway Station came into Abbott Downing to teach students from kindergarten through second grade about fire protection and safe cooking. Students also got to look at fire trucks and ambulances. Abbott Downing is also celebrating courage. During the months of October and September, we have been celebrating, or they have been celebrating courage in many different ways. One way they celebrate courage is by having a sun, and students can get stickers to place on the sun to show acts of courage. Another way is every day, third- to fifth-graders go on the announcement to share the ways that they have showed courage and got a sticker to the sun. Thank you and happy November.
Thank you very much. I have just one question, and that is, is will Principal Herbert, will you be submitting to the hypnosis demonstration?
I'm unsuccessfully... It doesn't work, okay.
Well, yeah, it's the same. Hopefully, hopefully you have another, well, willing participant, so...
Like you.
I don't know if I'm available that day, but we'll see. We'll check. Any other questions from the board or comments? Well, thank you very much for your report this month, and enjoy your days off this month as well, so... Superintendent, it comes to you, I believe.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me just go over some things, highlight some things that are going on. The first, what I'd like to highlight tonight is, I'd like to recognize seven members of the Runlet Middle School staff. They were on a field trip with their team, and there was a medical event that occurred with an adult on the trip. And these seven members of the staff really rose to the occasion, responded, supported the family. The youngsters in the team were not really with them. They were sort of ahead of the group, but I'd like to at least recognize them tonight. Brian Huckins, sixth-grade science teacher. Christian Svenlin, sixth-grade social studies. Andrea Kane, sixth-grade language arts. Kayla Crowdo, a sixth-grade math teacher. David Demone, a special ed instructional assistant. Andrea Teeter, special ed educational assistant. And Andrea Richards, one of our behavior specialists from White Birch. And again, the family was very grateful that, how they handled the situation, and their response, and two members of the team actually provided CPR and performed CPR. So hats off to them, and, you know, our teachers always step up to the occasion, and they did in this case. So I thought it was nice to be able to take a minute to recognize them. On some good news, I think I shared this with some of you, but we did receive a Department of Justice grant for the tune of $461,000. Just received notice of that. It's a three-year grant. That grant will enable us to procure and replace the radios that are in our buildings that sorely need to be replaced. We also, the blue light, as you know, they have blue lights outside the building to notify families that they're in lockdown, and it's, again, another signal for families who are outside of the building. We also will have the Columbine locks, which we'll be replacing locks that are locked from the outside. We need to get that on the inside. Those are the Columbine locks. Those will provide additional safety. And this grant is also in collaboration with the Concord Police Department. And in order to get the grant, we use the Homeland Security Recommendations. You know how they come around every year, and they go to every building, and they provide us with recommendations? So Ellen Desmond and Matthew were the two major grant writers on this project, and used those recommendations to help us with securing this grant, so we're pretty happy about that, to continue our work around building security. Reminder, and I think we already kind of went over that, but tomorrow's a day off for our students. Schools will be used as voting sites, and that includes Krista McAuliffe, Abbott Downing, Beaver Meadow School, and Broken Ground School. And our staff will be having a professional workday, most of the professional development days. I think I sent you that in one of my weekly reports. I think you probably all saw this robust PD sessions for our staff tomorrow. So that'll, most of the sessions will be held at the high school. And then again, on Thursday, our schools will have celebrations to honor our veterans. I've been brought to my attention that one of your members, your colleagues, Bob Cotton, will be a guest over at Runlet Middle School as they celebrate Veterans Day. I thought that was nice that Bob could share his story with the students. I think Sophia answered, or sort of talked about the NEAS collaboration and the work with them. As you know, the high school has been working for well over a year in preparation for this event today. It's a two-day review of the high school, and they look at all aspects of the high school. But they particularly focus on learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support, and learning resources. So they came in, they did a lot of interviews today. Two members of the board were interviewed today by the team, along with a group of us from central office, providing them with information about our relationship with the high school and the work that we do together. I thought it was a great, a great visit, and initial feedback was that they were very pleased with what they saw today. So we'll know more. They'll be back tomorrow. They have, they will write a pretty extensive report. They will do a lot of debriefing with Tim and his team, and so we'll hear more as it goes through the process. It'll be a while before they award the accreditation. It usually will be in March. They anticipate us receiving that notice, so... I thought that, I got an email over the weekend from Mrs. Hastings. You know, "This is a wonderful process. It's pretty intense," I will say. Like I said, the team up at the high school have been working on it for well over a year. But I think that it's one of those processes I'd like to be able to do at the middle school. But I think we need to give them time. You know, we have new leadership. We're looking at our building. I know that's been a lot of curriculum work done over at the middle school, so... But I do think that it's well worth the effort to go through that kind of review and analysis of what you do every day and get that kind of feedback. And again, it's from an outside group looking in, peering in, and sharing with us their thoughts. So I'd like to, I'm looking forward to that. Another grant which happens around this time of year, Ellen Desmond and I will be meeting with the Concord Trust in a couple of weeks. That will kick off the grant opportunities that our teachers will have. The teachers present innovation that can be some kind of innovation or innovative idea, resources that they can bring into the classroom, and Concord Trust awards grants based on their requests. So that'll happen over the next few weeks. We'll see teachers submit grants, and then we'll have an afternoon affair where the grants are awarded to our staff. So that's been a very positive exercise, and our teachers always take advantage of it, so that's coming up. Remind you that on Wednesday, that Bridget will be giving you a call in the morning to do the canvas of the votes. So she'll be calling each one of you, asking you to agree to the numbers that she's gonna give you around the election results. And the board has to do that process, and you do it every year around election time. So expect the call. Once Bridget has the results from Mrs. Bonifant at the city, and she's verified them, and then she'll call Bridget and give her those certified numbers, and then you'll have your chance to certify the results. So just be prepared for that on Wednesday, please. I'm just trying to get over some things. Today in the agenda, there's a certificate of authority. If you look at your board packet...
Is that thirty-four?
Thirty-four. Not usually, this usually does not happen, but in this particular grant from the Department of Agriculture, the New Hampshire Department of Agriculture, they have requested that you must authorize my signature for this grant. I sign all of the grants that come through with the state and the federal grants, even the DOJ grant that we just received. I just sign off on it. But they have particular rules that they follow in this grant, so I'm asking at some point tonight, Jim, that we have a vote, to allow me to sign this grant and authorize that I'm the representative of the district. So Brenda's already looked at it because she had to review it as the secretary to the board. So I'm just, you know, you can do that at the end if you want, but the information about the grant, by the way, the grant was for $29,000 for our food service department. And what that, what that grant does is that it enables us to buy product locally. So we're buying any foods that, and those products are prepared and used in our school lunches. And so it's, I think it's an effort to make sure that cafeterias, school district cafes, are buying food locally. And they gave us funding to do that, so, to the tune of $29,000, so... Donna Reynolds will oversee this grant and use some funds to purchase those products. So at some point, if you could...
Would you like us to do that now?
Does anybody here think there would be any reason we would need to do that after public comment? I don't think so either. Then I'll make a motion to authorize the Superintendent Murphy to sign off on the grant on behalf of the district as an authorized representative of Concord School District for this grant. Seconded by Ms. Walsh. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? That motion passes. You're in good shape there, Superintendent. And thanks, that's a great grant. Thank you, everyone involved.
And that's the second grant they got. Remember, they got a grant for $90,000. They're preparing foods. They actually have an intern from Keene, who's in the program over Keene, who's working with Donna, preparing different kinds of foods for all... You know, we have a lot of ethnic backgrounds at the high school, and so they're preparing foods that might be more enjoyable to youngsters. But they're all trying the different foods, so they have these little taste tests, and it seems like it's going over really well. They're pretty happy with that. So they've been, they've been great about securing extra funds for our food service program. I wanted to follow up on Sophia. Last meeting, she talked about the opportunity for the high school and the middle school students to participate in a focus group around Memorial Field. And when we went to the training about a month ago now, they did a training, you know, for our student reps on the board. It was done by the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, and they joined all the superintendents from Lakes Region. And one of the things that Sophia brought up at that meeting, as well as with us last month, was the voice that the students wanted to have relative to the work that's going to be done at Memorial Field. So with that, just so you know, we have a focus group planned for the high school on November twentieth. And for the middle school, we have one scheduled for November sixteenth. And so I will be doing that with Mr. Gill from the city. We'll facilitate that, those discussions. Many of the same questions that we had when Dave Gill did that. Remember the session that they had up at the high school? Many of the same questions we will be posing to our students. And if you've done focus group with students, it's a great, it's great, because they let you know what's on their mind, so it's a great opportunity. Reminder that you have a work session scheduled on the middle school project. And I just, when we go over the calendar, I'm trying to set some tone here about times, because it's gonna be six o'clock. When we have a full board meeting, six o'clock. So I'm gonna have to make that change in your calendar when we get to it, but that's an important meeting coming up. So I just wanted to remind you of that. And last but not least, which has been the topic of conversation today, I understand, and I know that you understand that, I would like to address some corrections on the calendar that the instructional committee was recommending that went forward. So Brenda, you can help me out with that one. But I do have a couple of things that I want to address on that calendar for corrections. That's it, unless you have questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
I just wanted to follow up on the Fly Five. Are all elementary schools using the same curriculum? Are all elementary schools using the same curriculum?
No, that was a pilot. So they're in the second year of the pilot because it required that training, those hours that Michelle mentioned. And so we're, this will be making those decisions about our program now. Now that the competencies have all been accepted, you adopted, they piloted that program. Some of the others are using programs like Choose Love. And so they'll, they'll come together, the social emotional committee will come, the SEL committee will come together and make some decisions on the, on the program.
And how are we evaluating which programs work best? Is it student discipline? Is it grades? Is it a combination?
I can't answer that question because I wasn't serving on the committee, but certainly all of those factors. I mean, how many referrals to the office? How many referrals to the nurse? How many disciplines? How many detentions? How many after-school? You don't see a lot of suspensions in any of that at the elementary school, but certainly referrals to the office. So I'll, I'll have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure exactly what tool, but they will be getting feedback from the users and those are the teachers who use that program and be able to determine the effectiveness of it. Did they follow those five, you know, cooperation, responsibility, empathy? Were they, did they show evidence of that? It's a harder thing to evaluate, so you have to use data like referrals and nurse visits.
Again, I, I hope we develop a sort of a, a program that evaluates it in that way and that we can see that data and decide which, you know, and have a look at what's working best and what's making the best difference for students.
Agreed.
Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
I have a quick question about our new communications hire. I had seen in the report that, that the hire went through maybe, the one we're sharing with CRTC, so I just wanted to find out how that's going and if maybe we expect to.
We haven't, yeah, we haven't, she hasn't come on board yet.
Okay.
She will start after the, after the Thanksgiving break, November twenty-seventh. So my, my thinking was that I would bring her to the board. I think it's important that you meet her and, and have a chance to chat with her like you do with other candidates that, that I, that we hire. And you're right, it's a sixty, forty split with the career and technical schools, so. And of course, Ann is involved in the hiring and the interviews and the process. We will bring her to me when she gets here.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you.
Any others? Superintendent, I'll ask with regards to the focus groups that are at the high school and the middle school, will there be a report to either City and Community Committee or to the board with regards to a summary of those focus groups?
Right, we'll, we'll do a summary like I think Dave did for the, if, if you remember, he did a summary for what he learned at the focus groups that we did at the high school with, with, with families and adults in the community. We'll do the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Superintendent. Thank you, Dan Sophia. With that, we'll move on to item number six, the finance report. I assume Mr. Dunn will present it, or will the finance chair present it?
I think Mr. Dunn is going to present it.
All right, Mr. Dunn?
Okay, so this is, this report is as of November third at twelve forty-four in the afternoon. I don't think there's anything on here that, highlighted in salaries. We have to do a little bit of modifications to one of the accounts. It's a little short, but other than that, all the accounts are encumbered and right now these are the balances. I'm trying to highlight if there's anything in particular of concern. I do have something down in professional services for instruction as it relates to some of the testing that we do with Second Start. But I just have to have some conversations with student services as to whether we need to move money out of it, an account to furnish that. Has to do with testing for students that are trying to maintain their credits and their degree. Other than that, I don't have anything in particular on here that I'm concerned after you did your budget. This does reflect your new approved budget. If you look down at the original budget column on page five of eight, one oh six, two thirty-one, one twenty-eight. I have not received anything back from DRA yet, so. Until I get that confirmation that the tax rate we told you is what that is, I have to continue to wait and be nervous about it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Questions? Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
This is probably more of a question for the superintendent or a combination thereof, but on the call-in subs, how does that relate to our rate for last year?
You mean the, what we pay them per day?
Our usage of call-in subs have, you know, and the, the budget. I know that was someplace we went over budget last year.
Yep.
And so I'm just curious if that, if we are on a similar or better case.
I can put that together and tell you where that's going to go. I mean, if you look to cover, you're looking at permanent subs, you see we're projected to spend three hundred seventy-seven thousand for permanent subs. And right now, we have already spent fifty, fifty-six thousand on call-in subs. So we'll probably spend over four hundred. Well, actually, probably close to seven hundred, I'm sorry. We'll probably spend all that combined, yeah, combined, yeah.
Were the numbers we saw last year combined?
Yeah.
So it's, we're on track for the same numbers?
I'm, I'm just showing right now, it says two fifty-nine because call-ins are just pay-as-you-go. We don't encumber that money. So what we've actually spent, if you look at what's encumbered, that's because we have committed funds because there's already hours being used. So if you combine between the three seventy-seven and the fifty-six, then add that two fifty-nine, you're probably going to be over seven hundred. It won't, it won't shock me if we go over that, that number.
If you could get on the call-in in particular, because the permanent subs we budgeted for, obviously, but.
Other questions relative to the financial report? All right, thank you, Mr. Dunn. At this point, we'll move on to the instructional committee, including the minutes and the report.
Hope, yes, hopefully you've had a moment or two to take a look at these. The instructional committee met on October nineteenth. We tabled agenda item number one, which was the math packing guide and goals. And moved on to the presentation of reports of student progresses with, progress with Kim and Assistant Superintendent Yarlot and Tom Crumright, where they presented information for us on student progress. Superintendent Murphy, have you drew anything to add to that part of it?
No, just that, I apologize, Kim's not here. You know, Kim had surgery, so she, you know, she got, spent some time with us today, but by, by the end of the day, she, she needed to get off of her, her report. But I, I think that what, what they're doing right now is working with the staff around making sure at elementary, because this is, you know, competency-based report card for them. It's been a long time coming, but Tom has been doing work with them so that they can access the, the online and, and put their grades in as well as their comments on the report card. He's met with several staffs and so far, so good. You know, the feedback has been pretty good, so. Report cards don't go out till December, so we still have time, December sixth, I think. Remember, they're on tries, trimesters in the elementary, so they have a little bit more time, so they'll continue to do the training. They'll have parent conferences.
They go before parent conferences. Is that new? Is that a change?
I, I think they're, they're holding off until they, until the tries, they're meeting with the parents in November.
Okay.
And the teachers will have their conferences with their parents and then the official report cards will come out after that.
I was, I, I guess I wasn't aware that that was happening.
Okay. All right. I will check with Kim then.
Okay.
I mean, my experience is teachers do a really good job, but you have fifteen minutes, ten, fifteen minutes with them and not having your own kids dated at, to be able to ask questions.
Based on the report card.
Based on the report card and where they're sitting in the competencies.
Yeah.
It's a less informed discussion on the parent's behalf, you know, side.
I'll check on that for you, I'll get back to you on that. Other than that, I don't have.
Then we moved on to high school rankings with Principal Hubert and Principal Kylian Chalakis. And if you look in the packet, you will see a presentation on that. It was a really interesting conversation where we are looking to change the rankings at the high school. Currently, it is valedictorian, salutatorian, if I correct, are the, the students who are recognized for academic achievement. And what the high school would like to do is add to that the Latin honor system of summa, magna, and cum laude in order to celebrate more students and to include more students in the celebration of academic achievement. So it wouldn't be leaving the old, it would be adding the extra so that we can recognize more students, which is really important, I think.
We'd do that at the collegiate level.
Right, right. So the, the instructional committee has recommended to the full board that we bring forward these new high school rankings for this year. And that is what we are asking you to take a vote on this evening. Should I make a motion so that we can discuss this?
Is it option three?
It is, yes, I believe so.
On page fifty-nine, the Latin honor system. Summa, magna.
Yep, yes.
I, I, no, no.
No, it's option.
It's a mixture.
It's a mixture of.
Option one and option three, so we'll still have a valedictorian.
You would still have a valedictorian, you would still have a salutatorian, and you would also have an, an option to recognize the Latin honor system.
And so the Latin honor system, kiddos will have like gold emblems on their diplomas, depending on which, you know, which tier they fall into. It's really an effort to be more inclusive of kiddos who've been going above and beyond. Is there like a written proposal with the, with what you guys came up with? In the minutes? Maybe in the minutes?
It would be in the minutes. And another piece of retaining the valedictorian and salutatorian was for scholarship purposes at higher, higher education. A lot of like scholarships and other financial aid opportunities are tied to those, being valedictorian, salutatorian.
Can't find the minutes now.
So the recommendation was to merge the two together.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Give you a moment or two to check those over and see that Mr. Hubert is here, if, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, it doesn't give. It doesn't really provide detail. It just says they brought some options for addressing school rankings. I mean, if we're confident in what the conclusion of the meeting was, I'm happy to vote on the motion, but I just don't have anything in front of me that says what came out of the meeting.
Yeah, there isn't a, oh, yes, it's just to bring recommendations to the full board.
Right. I remember the recommendation being the combination of options one and three. Am I right? Okay, thank you. So I'm happy to make the motion of moving forward with new considerations for academic honors, which include maintaining the valedictorian and salutatorian honorifics and also adding the Latin honor system of summa cum laude and magna cum laude for students who fit into those designations.
Second. So the motion has been made by Ms. Robinson and seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Discussion, would that go in? Would that, go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
Pointing clarity, you mentioned summa cum laude, magna cum laude. Are we also doing cum laude? Yeah.
Yes, yes.
That would be included. It's just the entire Latin honor system.
What's the GPA for cum laude?
Three point seven to three point eight, pretty sure.
So it's, it's on page sixty, if you look on page sixty.
Yeah, there you go, three point five to three point seven.
Just a question, would that go into effect with this year's graduating class?
Yes, I believe it would. As well.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Weinberg.
What do you two think?
I think it's a good idea.
I agree. I actually, I voted on one of those forms or I did with my parents and I, I really liked the idea of the Latin honor system because there are many kids that I know work very hard and they really deserve that recognition, especially because we don't have weighted grades. So people that take harder classes, more challenging classes, they drop, their GPA drops very quickly because they put so much effort into these classes and it may not be easier for them to get a higher grade than it would to somebody that didn't challenge themselves in that class. So I think this is a really great idea to kind of solve that gap between the weighted grades.
Does it solve the gap between the weighted grades?
Well, it would in the sense that you, we only recognize two people right now, the valedictorian and the salutatorian. When you look at this honor system, you have a group of, you know, fifteen to twenty students, all those students that are an eyelash away from salutatorian or whatever are now recognized.
So it's interesting, we had this conversation in the instructional because I was pontificating about how I was very annoyed that there was no weighted GPA for that exact reason, Sophia. You take a bunch of APs and then they're not factored in and then you're like, ah, I got a B or a C or C minus in AP Chem and it's not looking better. Now that I remember that.
Not that it was stress-related.
But what Dr. Herbert and Kylian Chalakis brought up were, because we're removing the ranking system, that also kind of, if we still retain rankings, then it would make sense to have a weighted GPA since we're no longer having rankings.
But I don't understand how if you're a student who takes calculus and you get a C, that doesn't put you, doesn't risk putting you below summa cum laude or magna cum laude versus somebody who took a less challenging class.
Right.
Oh, yeah, no, it doesn't.
So it doesn't address the.
No, it still doesn't address.
It just includes more people. Yeah.
Can I ask Mr. Hubert why we don't address that?
Sorry?
This is way before.
Put me in the hot seat.
So just say traditionally, this, well, this problem is not unique to Concord High School, it's a national problem where you look at how can we disseminate who took a more challenging course? And the reality is, we're meeting students where they're at, so yes, there's AP courses that require a lot of rigor to it. The end result maybe not, isn't that the student make a cum laude, magna cum laude, a summa cum laude, but it's what they're getting out of their education that we try and focus on. When we can split hairs, we'll never come up with a perfect system. Even the, the alvatorian, salutatorian, we're going out to the thousandth place, decimal and in some cases, ten thousands to decide the difference between second, third, fourth, and fifth. Is that fair?
Right.
And they're all taking rigorous, rigorous course studies, AP, calculus, et cetera. For the vast majority of the students taking these courses, they're going to end up where they would have even if we weighted. There are some students, yes, if you got a C plus in the AP Kel, it's going to impact your GPA and you might miss out on an opportunity to get cum, uh, cum laude. But the idea is you challenge yourself through rigorous course studies. So on your transcript, you're taking that forward with you to your college. And the educational experience you took in opportunity go through. Does it, yes, it, it does mean that you might receive a lower GPA. There is no rate system for it. The best system is not to do it, is not to calculate the GPA and then you don't have to worry about it. But then you're, you're missing out on some of those opportunities to recognize academic excellence and achievement. So it's a double-edged sword. We don't want to lose that opportunity. But at the same time, we're trying to recognize more and more efforts. Minus this system, we recognize ten students. Top ten. With this system, we're, we're looking at fifteen or so in that top tier, twenty, another twenty or so in the second tier and up to another twenty to thirty in that third tier. That's more than we've ever recognized before. And some of those students in our previous system, we're talking, again, not even a full point. away from the fifth, third, fourth, and they weren't recognized in our top ten because we had to go out to the thousandth place. So we don't have a solution. The solution other places have come up with is doing a way with a numerical value altogether and having a different level of doing academic recognitions. We're not proposing that. We have some traditions that we do like and we do celebrate. There is monetary compensation for scholarships and stuff tied to the traditional system. So it, we feel that it would actually hurt some of the opportunities students get. And this is a way of celebrating more of the academic achievement versus, you know, just focusing on the top ten. So.
Thank you. Can I ask?
Thank you, Dr. Herbert.
Can I ask a quick question? On page fifty-nine, magna cum laude is three point eight to three point eight-nine, but on page sixty, it's three point seven to three point five.
No, he's confused.
Uh, can you tell me, and in that, on page fifty-nine, we don't have a cum laude. But on page sixty, we have three point five to three point seven. Can somebody clarify what the actual numerical?
Page sixty.
Page sixty.
Is going to be what we would follow.
Slightly easier.
Yeah. I think page fifty-nine was a brief introduction to allow us to have a conversation. Page sixty is a more concrete.
And I think the other piece to note that was not mentioned is, we're also retaining like the deciles, or now we're putting people into deciles, correct? Like top ten percent, top twenty percent, and that's what will be recorded to colleges, since they will not see like class rank as well.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to commend the committee and the high school for going in this direction. I just think that we haven't watered down our academic system one little iota by doing this, but we have very positively grasped in a bunch of kids who have worked very hard. So I think it's great.
I agree, Tom.
Okay.
And I think Ms. Robinson pointed this out, but my understanding was that there could be some scholarship opportunities for students that are in these groups that would not necessarily receive the scholarships without it.
All right. We, any questions, further questions?
Jonathan's going on.
I have one more.
You go ahead.
For Sophia and Van, would, would you prefer a weighted GPA?
Well, I think Van and I both, I think we do take challenging classes. And sometimes we feel that students choose to take the less rigorous classes to retain that high GPA. I have heard of students doing that. And sometimes that feels very challenging for us because we put in our hard work and we try to do it the best we can and take the hardest classes we can to challenge ourselves. And so we get a better education. And I think it's very valuable what Dr. Herbert said about, yeah, these AP classes, it's a, you know, we don't get that weighted like we would in maybe another school, but we do get that education and that experience of what a college class is like. And I also think that is very valuable. But I think if we had to choose, I think weighted GPAs might be better for, you know, what we think.
This conversation is as old as the Memorial Field conversation in this town, can I just say?
Yep.
Thanks for weighing in, guys. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
My only question is, do we feel that the motion on the table covers everything that we are incorporating into this new policy for the high school? Like, does it?
It's a good question.
Like the scholarship information, the, I mean, I just want to make sure that the motion covers the proposal. Do you feel that it?
What is the motion?
I made the motion to update our academic honors to continue to include valedictorian and salutatorian, and in addition, add the Latin honor system of summa cum laude, magna cum laude, and cum laude as presented to the instructional committee. Do you think that's sufficient?
Yeah.
I think so, yes. And all the resulting scholarship exposure and all this sort of stuff, that's just.
Impired.
In agree.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good question.
Other questions? We won't hold the vote right now because we haven't had public comment, but it'll be one of the first votes.
Fine by me.
After the public comment.
Cool.
From a procedural point of view. And, but thank you to everyone who put the work in on this. You know, clearly, we're discussing it in, you know, just a few minutes here, but you obviously thought through a lot of options and you had a lot of input, and we very much appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. And then we also discussed two proposed calendars for the school year next year. And the instructional committee, I have voted to recommend to the full board both draft A and B for discussion, is what I, is what my notes say.
I was absent that day, just so we all know.
So.
And I think it's important that we have a chance to explain that there was a mistake in the board book calendars that were presented in that, in a wording mishap. It looks, it appears as though the Wednesday before Thanksgiving would be a professional development day for staff. That was not what was intended by Superintendent Murphy or the instructional committee. What was being thought at that time was that the time instructors give to conferences in November, they give two nights, the Monday and the Thursday and the Monday before Thanksgiving after teaching a full day, are designated for parent-teacher conferences and that those times be counted towards professional development.
And that's what Wednesday is.
And that's what Wednesday would be. So they would not be working on Wednesday, but those two nights would cover PD hours required by the district in the collective bargaining agreement to go towards the professional development requirements for the year. And.
They have a contract for one hundred and eighty-four days under this new two, twenty-four, twenty-five, so it does count as one of their one hundred and eighty-four days. Because it just, it's evening work, many hours at night, and then they, that day is.
So we put those two nights together to cover one day of professional development that is required in the one hundred and eighty-four days. And I will, for my part, as well, take responsibility that I wish that I had picked up the phone and called Superintendent Murphy to ask her about this first thing in the morning. I feel that a lot of discomfort and drama, honestly, could have been avoided today had that been done. So sometimes a simple phone call is the best way to go. Thank you for explaining that to us.
And, and so the other, I would, I would recommend draft A. I have all along. And every, and some of the questions that I have is, you know, why B? And I think early on in the instructional committee, I talked about, what is it, what do we need as we go down this road of teaching kids? What are the hours? What are the days? What does, how will the schedule impact us? You know, we hear about, you know, the end of, in the summer. We're interfering with camps. We're interfering with kids going out for jobs. The temperature has always been an issue. So that isn't the only reason for going to the B or just even suggesting it. It was really a way to begin the discussion, to talk about what will our calendars look like in the next five, seven years as we change the way we do business in our district. I mean, it starts early on in August, right? We have days that, we have teacher workshop days as proposed in B. But then you look at the June and you're out on June third. So there were, but again, this was, my recommendation is draft A. The traditional draft with the changes that, the two changes that are made, one is the twenty-seventh, as well as the sixteenth of June, which we need to take out. Because we're, we're covered now for all the days. We don't need it.
You need to make September tenth the professional day.
We need, tenth will be the professional day, not the sixteenth. So if you make those two changes on draft A, I think we will be fine. So just remember, B was a way to start the conversation about how we, how we deliver and what the time looks like and, you know, and these conversations will be with our students, they'll be with parents, they'll be with our, certainly with our teachers, and our educational assistants, and our tutors, all the folks that we serve. But it was an exercise. I talked with the administrative team, the principals too. And so we want to kind of get together and start talking about what it would look like.
And these, both these drafts went to the CEA?
Well, there was a question about, I heard today that I, that that did not happen. I did meet with the president of the CEA and talked about the calendars with him. And when we left, it was fine. And all I said was, when, you know, look it over, give me a call back. I didn't hear anything, so I assumed that it was okay. The second was we sent out to the EAs, our educational associates, as well as our tutors, and I did not hear back from them at all. So I'm assuming that it was okay with them too. Their contract's a little bit different for hours and days, but at least they had a sense of when school starts and when it ends.
Okay. So it's not the responsibility of the board or administration to bring this to teaching staff to okay it?
Well, I, I like to bring it to them. I want them to see it. I don't want to make a decision in, you know, without having their input. I think it's really important to have it. I did that. Perhaps I should have picked up the phone and I didn't hear, but I assumed that if.
But we wouldn't go directly to the staff? That would go through the education?
No, no, that would go through me. That, you know, that would be my work with the unions. That's the best way to do it, to, you know, to have that discussion.
But typically, the unions would bring it to their staff?
My understanding is they then bring it to, you know, their building reps, I think.
Building reps, okay.
And then they determine whether they approve it. Not approve it, because they don't have appro, you are the ones that have approval power. They don't, but they have recommendation power, just like I do. We're no different.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Robinson.
Superintendent, I don't remember what the deadline is for reporting out our calendars to the DOE. When is this calendar due?
We have plenty of time for that.
Okay.
The reason why we do this early on is because we have nine sending districts that all go to the Career and Technical Center.
And they all need to be united.
And they all need to have it. And we, there's a new rule in the career technical world that, that we have to have common calendars so that, you know, youngsters know when, when our school is opened and we work together with all the sending schools so that we're all on the same page. And that's a new, new rule. So we wanted to get out of the gate a little bit early. I normally would have probably brought this next month, but I just felt like Ann up at the, up at the Career and Technical Center needed time to work with her sending schools.
Okay.
So I did, I did jump it a little bit.
All right.
Go ahead, Ms. Meeker.
I would, based on the feedback that we got today, from just the visual of draft A and the professional day being highlighted on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, for anyone that isn't paying attention today but might see it in the future, I feel like there's a different visual way we should represent it on the calendar. I don't think it should go as a PDF online like this. There should at least be some explanation if that's the case. And also, it sounds like there might be two changes that need to happen to draft A, two amendments. So I kind of like what Sarah might be getting at, which is that if we want to make those amendments, but then give the public a little time to absorb that amended draft before voting, I would be amenable to that. Did you think we needed to do something in September?
Or do we?
Take the June PD day and put it on September tenth.
Yeah. So just a final, a final draft that people can look at and fully understand before we vote on it. I'd be, I'd be happy with that.
So Ms. Meeker, are you suggesting that we would remand this back to the administration to make those changes on A and B and table this until our next meeting in December?
I would first, I think we should talk about whether or not we approve the amendments to the draft and then send it back to the administration? Or can I move that we send it back to the administration to make those two amendments?
You can do whatever you want.
I can do whatever I want.
Because you're a school board member.
I mean, we haven't really discussed draft B. I think it was more of a conceptual draft than anything. I think the practical draft is draft A. But I do think that it would be important to have a final draft for us to vote on. So I move that we send back draft A to the administration with two amendments, professional day moving to September, and also further clarification on the draft of that professional day before Thanksgiving to be absolutely clear that teachers do not have to report to work that day.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second discussion.
I just want to, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You know, certain things are triggers. And, and teaching in this day and age is high stress all the time. I think we all need to do volcano breathing a lot more than we do. And, and it wasn't about the calendar in my mind. When I was reading it today, it was about all the things, that those assumptions, potential mistakes, and actions that didn't make sense and were a surprise do when you see it that way. I don't think there's a teacher in this district that really doesn't know we can change this a million times if we need to. I also know what, what it feels like at the end of a long day with half your parents hating you and half your parents loving you and not getting all the help you need and being frazzled, which is a lot of teaching all the time, that these things are upsetting. I just, I just want to put it out there that I think we're all doing the best we can, and sometimes we really stink at it. But I think that, that the NEA, I mean, the CEA, and, and our staff members and building reps that work so hard for teachers need a chance to sit down and look at it. And if there are more suggestions and recommendations that need to be made, that we need to be amenable to those as well.
The only suggestion I have would be that I would like to, rather than have it just come to me, I think it should go back to the instructional committee. That's where it came from.
Yeah, that's kind of.
I would work on a renewed draft, a new draft, based on the things that came up tonight. But I would bring it back to the instructional committee, and we have a meeting scheduled.
December eleventh?
Monday.
Next Monday.
Yeah, next Monday.
I'll work fast.
It's November.
Is that enough time to get feedback from the CEA?
Yeah, I think so. I'll reach out to the leadership and.
Yeah, yes.
Come to the instructional meeting.
Right. But let me work on a draft with those changes.
Okay.
Because you're right, having to do it tonight is, is kind of hard on everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Not, and again, it's still a draft. It always has been a draft.
Okay. Ms. Walsh, you have a question?
So on draft A, and I'm probably a little bit of a broken record on this every year, but I continue to hear from parents about their intense dislike of the two-day week in the first week of school. And I know we have contractual issues that we can't start earlier. Do we have a contractual issue that requires us to have the Friday off?
No, we don't. We don't. I mean, it's been a tradition to have that long Labor Day weekend, and that's what it involves. I didn't, there wasn't an appetite for moving the professional development days back, you know, to the week before, which would have been the week of like August nineteenth. And I talked to them about that last year, and they really, they weren't interested in that. And the other issue is, is that the contract, the CBA says, after Labor Day.
Mm-hmm.
And they have been very gracious about moving it, their workshop days to the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh. Make sure I'm on the right date. Yeah, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. And that's why the two days.
And I'm aware of that. And I just think, you know, if we look, maybe the instructional committee wants to look at the thirtieth, if not for this year, for next year. You know, this is, you know, you have a two-day week, a four-day week, a four-day week. It's very hard to get kids on a school routine for families. But that first week is also particularly hard because summer camps have closed down, but there's no, but none of, but they're not offering like they do on other holidays.
Right.
Full daycare. So you, so, you know, parents have to take a lot of that week off if they have younger children. So, you know, that part. But I also think just, you know, you get kids into school for two days, and then it's four days before they go back. And then you're starting the whole process of, yes, you really have to get up for school and all over again.
We have that this week. We have today, and then tomorrow's off. And Wednesday, they're back in. And then on Friday, they're out.
Yes.
So it's, it is hard when you're trying to pattern learning. You're right, but it, contractually, I don't, I have not.
Well, I'm asking about the thirtieth, so.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll let that.
And then we can get out on June tenth.
I'll let, I'll talk to the instructional committee about that.
Just a few.
All righty.
Other.
You're welcome, Brenda.
Other questions? I have, I'm, I'm reading this, that we're at a discussion between I have, I'm, I'm reading this that we're at a discussion between, because we're draft A, draft B. Draft B takes into account those folks who are concerned about the heat in the summer and June. And also, you know, it allows us to still start later in August. Now, if the teachers especially, but parents as well, are not as concerned about the heat because this is, you know, if we're going in a climate change type of world and we are getting more and more like middle Atlantic states, middle Atlantic states have one week off in that semester. So I think, you know, is that concern about heat in, and we heard, as worried a lot about that this year, is that concern about heat in June and heat in August great enough for us to, to consider draft B?
No.
But if, but if the teachers are not as concerned about the heat and would more rather have a draft day type of a thing, then I'm also amenable to that. And then also the parents, so.
Well, draft B really isn't feasible as just Concord. That would need to be a bigger area, like the state would need to do that. You can't have-
Because we have nine sending schools that-
Right.
Well, we would have to work with them. And there are other schools that do not have the same weeks off as we have. So that is in a, you know, and Concord leads.
Yeah, we're taking away two, and we're taking away two weeks. And you have staff that has students that go to other districts. And that could pose, I mean, we're trying to work really hard to improve attendance and you've got two weeks that suddenly your children don't have school or do have school when you don't. It's just, it's, it would be very difficult to, to implement draft B at this point in time. But it is worth consideration.
Well, and the only reason I bring it up is the concerns about heat. And if that concern is not that great, or not as great as I am perceiving it to be, then, then yeah.
And I think we're taking steps to-
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I think calendar B is really just a conceptual presentation. It is something that we do have to be cognizant of, that heat is becoming more of an issue. And I think what we're asking everyone to do when they look at this is to think about what kind of compromises we are willing to make as a community in order to make sure that our schools are the healthiest, best spaces for our kiddos to be learning. So, yeah, we're totally not ready for this yet, but it's just planting seeds so that folks can start to just ruminate on what is it going to mean if I have to choose, you know, between a February vacation or my kid being in a hundred-degree classroom, no matter what kind of AC units we've got, you know? So-
Well, in middle Atlantic states and southern states, they start school the second week of August, sometimes the first week of August. In their air-conditioned school.
Well, but there are many schools that are in air-condition there, too, and they start towards the end. It's just that we're boxed in on the August and on the June side, so we only have so much to do. But I want to be sensitive to those people who think that the heat is a major concern and that we should be considering an alternative calendar, because I want to be sensitive to them that we are considering an alternative calendar. If that's not the one we choose, that is fine. But I want to make sure that we're considering it for them. And for the teachers and the parents likewise. I mean, everybody has a say in this. So, but I appreciate the robust discussion. Go ahead.
I would just add that I think we should, I heard a suggestion from a parent today about eliminating some of the Monday holidays, especially those that are not universal, like Indigenous Peoples' Day is not universal. It's not a recognized state holiday anymore, or it's not a day off for state employees anymore, that that would free up some of the days. I think, for my part, one of the things that I do not want to see as the solution, and as we debate into June, is reducing learning days for students. And so that's part of what, because what happens is in June, we get lobbied, well, we should just have fewer days of school for the kids. And, you know, I think that's not where I want to go. I think we, they need to be in school. And I've heard the arguments about, well, the last week of school is just, you know, movies and whatnot and, you know, fun activities, which is great because that's part of learning, too. But those things happen, I think, whenever the last week of school is. So not to, not to foreshadow our debate in June, but I just think, as we think about the calendar-
You will have one in June, guaranteed.
I know we will. Well, we'll see how the winner is.
Yeah.
I'd love to recommend that any of those suggestions come to instructional on Monday. So if folks have any more, I think that's where the discussion is best had.
Mr. Weimer.
Sophia Van.
I will not be here, so that's a, it's a vague.
I think I would definitely prefer draft A. Because I feel like it's a long time with no breaks and students just get burned out on draft B. Because there's like a break in March and then there's one day off until then, and so on.
That would stink.
Shall I retract my motion and just make a new motion to just send this all back to instructional?
Yeah.
And I'll second it.
Okay. And, but that vote also has to come after our public motion, so.
Now do you know what-
Does anyone on the board have an objection to her retracting that motion and remaking it?
Who seconded it?
Do you second the original?
She seconded both, so. Unless, I think, I think we can just, we can just retract that and then we'll just settle it. Anybody else have other discussions with regards to this? I think it was a good discussion. I appreciate the work that the instructional committee did on this and will continue to do on this. Okay. Is there anything else with regards to the instructional committee review?
Thank you, no.
Well, I would only ask that you amend the minutes to include Barb's name on the list of committee members.
Oh, yeah.
We missed it somehow when we amended the minutes.
Do I have a motion to amend the minutes to correct the-
Seconded.
All right. Is all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That change is made. Thank you very much for observing that.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll go into item number eight, which is before our votes, is public comment. This is public comment on any topic. So we do ask that you abide by the policy for public participation, policy number 136. But with that, anybody wishing to make a public comment, if you would be kind enough to come up and sign your name on that, and then please speak into the microphone so that everybody at home can hear.
Thank you, thank you very much. My name is John Tobin. I've lived in Concord since 1985. I've been before the board in various incarnations about various things. All my kids went to Concord schools and received a great education. Almost as long as I've lived in Concord, I've been involved in the issue of school funding and property taxes. I was part of the legal team in the Claremont case. And because the state has, as you know better than anybody, the state has backslid on its responsibilities for a long time, about five years ago, we started doing more public speaking about that. And we had, with your support, we made a presentation at Concord High School a couple of years ago. And the, that battle about school funding and property taxes has again gone back to court. There are two cases pending. And we think it's an opportune time to do another presentation about school funding and property taxes. And so we're planning one on December 5th. And we're changing the venue from Concord High to the Red River Theater, trying to drum up a lot of the community interest. And so I just have some flyers to pass out to you about that. We hope that you all will come to the forum. We hope that you will encourage members of the community, you will let people know about it, and you will encourage people to attend. As you all know so well, there are hardly, there's no two greater public issues than schools and taxes. And the way that New Hampshire funds its schools is profoundly unfair to many students and teachers and taxpayers. And Concord is one of the places that suffers from that. And I know as a Concord taxpayer that, notwithstanding the disadvantages that Concord has, Concord does a great job with its schools. And people in Concord pay the taxes that need to be paid to make that happen. But it's an unfair system, and I think it's a good time for another discussion, another public discussion about it in Concord. So we hope that as many of you as possible can come that night and that you will encourage people to come as well and that you will do what you can do to let people know about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate that. I've been on the board long enough to have attended your last meeting at Concord High, so thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Six P.M.
I just want to say one other thing. In those five years of traveling around to, I've done presentations in libraries and cafeterias, and I have really come to appreciate what an important and difficult job being on the school board is. And a lot of people blame local school boards for our state's funding system. And you all have, you have a lot of discretion about a lot of things, but you don't have a lot of discretion about what the state gives you. And I just really appreciate your service. And I have to also say, and I, the civility and respect with which you do your business is an incredible contrast to what we've seen on TV lately in Washington and the candidate forums. My wife and I went to both monitor forums, and we were really impressed by the respect that people show to each other and people's seriousness about the issues. That's a culture that I think this school board fosters, and I thank you for that as a citizen.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Tobin. But I will also say that it is my experience in this board that everyone who sits out where you folks are and has commented in the past and on numerous issues and debates have also been very, very civil. And, and we greatly respect that as well. So we're trying to do our best for the kids and the taxpayers. Thank you. Do we have additional comment? Mr. McCrea, come on. You can be first. We'll have time for you. I promise.
Good evening. Some of you may have seen the email I sent out today regarding the calendar. And I was wondering if anyone had any questions for me to try and clear up this controversy. I was sitting at home last night watching football, and all of a sudden, my phone started exploding. I guess a lot of people follow school board members on Facebook. And so to talk to Kathleen about, a month ago, Kathleen, three weeks, when I did see, did see the, a calendar. I immediately pointed out that the calendar A had the 16th of June as a PD day. And I said, we can't agree to that because under the new contract language that we bargained, that PD day had to fall within-
First of all, this is-
So we left it at that. And I was assuming, and I probably should have followed it up, that I was going to get a revised calendar. That never appeared. Usually, when I do get a calendar, I make copies. We have a monthly meeting with our members and we vote on the calendar. And Kathleen's right, we don't have any power on the calendar, except we can always say we want to come back after Labor Day. So that's a fact. So, you know, that's the history of what's going on with the calendar. The history behind the Wednesday before Thanksgiving goes back about 22, 23 years, when both sides agreed that it wasn't fair to parents to have parent-teacher conferences on half-day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Parents have other things they want to be doing. So what we used to do back then is one night parent-teacher conferences in that half-day. And then both parties agreed to move it to two nights and have that day not be a school day. And that's the history of that. So if anyone has any questions, I can clarify on, I'd be glad to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions?
I think the revised, from what I heard tonight, there's a couple of things. You're going to move the date on June 16th to the 10th of September, correct?
Yeah, because that's an election day of some sort.
Right. So I think the CEA would support that move. And also-
Just clarify that Wednesday is just a day.
Wednesday is just a day.
You don't have to do anything. You've already done it two nights prior. You've done your Wednesday professional development in the two nights.
Right, exactly. And that counts as a workday.
Yes.
Now, okay, so I think we're good with that. And also, I want to clarify, did I hear tonight that the parent-teacher conferences were going to be counted as professional development for teachers?
Well, no, that's what that day is for. Like those-
That's why they have that day off.
That's why the day, it shouldn't have been called a professional development day, but it counts towards your days. It doesn't count as a-
The hours that you do for parent-teacher conferences count towards your total contractual hours.
Correct.
And the 27th was sort of put on the calendar as an error to sort of account for that you were going to be doing 184 days.
Okay. All right.
It should be a day. I'll have a question, Mr. McCrea. Is the tabling this and moving this back to the instructional committee, and they are meeting on-
Monday.
On Monday. So there will be a recommendation on Monday. Will that give you enough time before our December meeting review?
Yes, our monthly meeting is set Tuesday, so if we can get some indication Tuesday morning, that would be great.
I would expect there'll be a recommendation from the instructional committee that evening.
So we would vote on it pending board approval.
Right. Great. Just right.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
And that's Monday night, so if anyone that wants to come, if you-
They will come.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Certainly, we appreciate that. And, Mr. McCrea, we respect your contractual ability to, you know, not start until after Labor Day. And then if you ever put that in there, then we'll just adjust our calendar accordingly into June. But I think this works well right now.
I think that would put us well into late June.
Yeah, well, so I think this works well right now, and we appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you.
But we do respect your rights to, to be able to do that. Do we have any other public comment? Please. You can come down and talk. Mr. McCrea's filling out the form, so you can do it after you speak. So all I ask is that you speak into the microphone so that those folks who are listening on the streaming service can, can hear.
Okay. My name is Claire Mikelewitz, and as you probably remember, my husband and I live at 47 South Curtisville Road next to Broken Ground School. We are retired educators who are strong supporters of public schools. And I just wanted to let you know once again that we greatly appreciate the time and energy that all of you school board members devote to the education of our children here in Concord. And we're also very grateful for the education that our own grandchildren here have received from the many wonderful teachers. So it was great to hear from the children who came over from Beaver Meadow School because that's what it's all about, the kids. And I think social, emotional learning and critical thinking skills are probably the two top priorities, in my opinion, that young children should be thoroughly aware of. So we're here this evening, and a number of our other neighbors and some friends were unable to be here due to illness. And some of them are actually working to prepare for the election tomorrow. So in my comments, I'm going to include some of their concerns. So as you know, we've attended many board meetings and the various community forums. And one of the questions and concerns we have is, I know that many, many questions were posed during those sessions, and also lots of emails have gone out to you folks. I'm sure you feel like you don't even want to turn your phone or your computer on and see how many you have. But what we're wondering right now is how they will be answered and addressed. I often go on the Concord Middle School website, and I know there's some frequently asked questions, which I've read. The responses aren't terribly comprehensive, but we're wondering, you know, what happened to the other many, many, many questions that were raised in the various meetings. I do want to thank Brenda Hastings. We've had many conversations with her through email and phone calls. And among them was our disappointment about the October work session. We had come hoping to hear what many of you think now that you've had public input, you've looked at the different presentations about the- at the different presentations about the proposed middle school sites. And what we actually heard basically was just information from the architects. So, we're hoping that at the, I believe it's November 15th work session, that at that time we will be able to hear from more of you folks because I try to be open-minded and I also try to be a critical thinker and I feel like I need more information in order to form a valid opinion myself. So, I hope that will take place. And, you know, I've plowed through a lot of the documents for the past few years about the history of all of this project and it's time-consuming and very tedious. So, I know my husband Steve had mentioned back in July that it would be really helpful to kind of have a summary sheet with some bulleted items that just really highlight the main facts, figures, considerations when choosing the sites between the existing Runlet site and the Broken Ground Millbrook area site. One of our big concerns is the lack of a true democratic process here in Concord with regard to school board decisions. We were shocked to learn that apparently SAU 8 is only one or possibly two, and I don't know exactly which one it is, but school districts in New Hampshire that can tax and spend without any oversight from the voting public or the city council. So, for example, our close neighbors in Pennacook have democracy over their schools while here in the capital city, we don't. So, we're very supportive of schools, but it's kind of disturbing to think that a school construction project of $176 million or more can be constructed without a public vote. So, we actually accept part of the blame ourselves for not knowing the long and complex history of this situation. But we have discovered that by no means are we the only residents who aren't really aware of the charter history. So, I hope there is a way to revisit that at some point before having to wait for the next vote in 10 years. But that's kind of a discussion for another time. So, anyway, I just wanted to thank you all again for the hard work that you do and we look forward to the next work session and hopefully hearing some of your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please.
Longtime city, sorry.
No worries. We have...
Okay, appreciate it.
Bye.
I'm Steve Mikelewitz. I live with her. And this has become our monthly date night and it's pretty clear we don't get out much. This is the first opportunity that we've had to address the board outside of the work session where we didn't have that opportunity. So, I've jotted down some notes and my concern is specifically about the chart that was handed out because it is a decision-making chart, apparently. And so, I've written these things down so that I don't stray and don't take too long. So, I'm going to say that the chart presented by the architects at the, at the board work session ostensibly to track the relative strengths of each of the two potential middle school sites was, in my opinion, both incomplete and biased. For example, by way of a critical omission, the goal of setting the middle school, citing the middle school close to both the high school and Memorial Field, which was deemed so important and advocating for the Clinton Street Middle School site, was conspicuously absent from the architect's chart. By way of bias, although a goal was listed in the architect's chart citing the advantage of the Broken Ground location with respect to accessibility to forests, hiking trails, and other nature-based amenities generally, no goal was listed with regard to the South Street location citing the advantages of easy access to governmental, historical, cultural, and civic amenities. And finally, a major flaw in the chart, in my opinion, was a lack of weighting by both importance and priority of each of the listed goals. Surely, at least some of the goals listed in the chart do not or should not carry equal weight with respect to priority and importance. In conclusion, if such a chart is being used to facilitate decision-making on important issues such as this, it should be at the minimum comprehensive, unbiased, and appropriately prioritized and weighted with respect to importance. Appreciate your time and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. And thank you for signing. I know that's tedious. Do we have anyone else who'd like to make a public comment this evening? All right. Not seeing any. Thank you all for your public comment. We will move on to the votes with regards to the high school rankings vote. Going back to the motion that is, has been made and I don't think, and seconded, and don't, I don't think it has been changed at all with regards...
Would you like me to restate it for everyone?
I'd be thrilled.
I thought you might. So, the motion was to expand academic honors recognition, keeping valedictorian and salutatorian, but implementing, adding in the Latin honor system of summa cum laude, magna cum laude, and cum laude for students who fit within those designations.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And that, that motion was seconded. Is there any further discussion or any comments from anyone?
Could you remind me who seconded that?
I did.
That was seconded by Mr. Weinberg.
You had the next one.
I had the other one.
You had the next one.
Yes. And you did too.
Patience.
I'm just used to waiting.
So, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much. The second motion that we are considering has to do with remanding the calendar back to the instructional committee. And I really paraphrase that, Ms. Meeker. I saw...
That's exactly what I should have said.
And that was motion by Ms. Meeker and seconded by Ms. Higgins. Is there any further discussion with regards to that? Thank you very much. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. Thank you. Is there anything prior to going to personnel? Very good. In that case, we will move on to item number nine, personnel. Ms. Karen, are you taking this one?
I am taking this one. Good evening. I am bringing forward some new winter coach nominations. If you refer to page 61 and 62 of the packet. We have, I forget, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have nine new coaches for the winter season this packet.
Does anyone have any questions?
We have a head coach for girls hockey.
Yes, it went last board meeting.
Okay.
Anything else?
Joey Ad is great. We did Bell Cook. He's very patient.
Yeah, these are, this is a nice list. I recognize far too many names.
Sam's leaving. So, all right. Does anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we accept the nine presented coaches for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Weinberg, I believe. The motion was made by Ms. Higgins. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else for us tonight?
I do not.
Very good. All right. Thank you. With that, we will move on to subcommittees. Is there a report this month from sustainability?
It's similar to last month, continuing to work on community power. Recently, two different organizations, the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and Standard Power presented to the Concord Energy and Advisory Committee. What each of those organizations, one is nonprofit, one is for profit. They provide different avenues for community members in Concord to pursue aggregated power for renewable energy. And I believe under that the school district would follow through in some sort of way as well. I don't have any other updates, but Matt, do you have any?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Weinberg or Mr. Cashman? All right. Let's move on. Equity advisory. Do we have someone that'll be, who's covering that?
Well, I'll cover it. You asked at the last meeting that we include the notes from the meeting and so those are included. That, that committee was back in October 3rd. So, we have had a brief oral update on this. And so, I just included the minutes from that meeting. Next meeting for this organization will be on January 16th over at Runlet Middle School at three, usually three to five. And again, we're working to enrich our committee, have more folks from the community involved, making sure we get the students there from their schools and so that they participate. It's great when they're there. We continue to do a lot of training using professional development days like, like tomorrow to offer training to our staff. You know, that's ongoing. So, I wish Quincy would be here tonight, but his team that he coaches in soccer was in the state playoffs. Unfortunately, he just sent me an email. He was hoping to make it. They went into overtime and they lost four to three. So, Quincy's not going to be a happy camper tomorrow, but he will be with you because we talked about the importance of him being here so that you, you could all have a chance to chat with him.
Thank you very much. And our consolation is that...
He's going to be disappointed because they were undefeated.
The, I will say the team had an outstanding year or so, even though they lost in the end.
Yeah, they did.
Does anyone have any questions with regards to equity or DEIJP? All right. Okay. With that, in other business, enrollment reports, superintendent, you're going to take these, I said.
Yeah, I think, you know, you can see it all pretty explained. It's self-explanatory. The elementary numbers have stayed very steady. Runlet, we saw a little decrease. The high school, we saw a decrease. And I did see, I asked for a breakdown of students. Let me just grab it. Sorry. I asked for a breakdown of students, like where are the students? Where did they go? And so, I have a complete list. We're still looking for three freshmen that we have not been able to identify. What happens is that they finish up at eighth grade and then the parents send them somewhere and we're not notified. They could go to a, you know, Prokio School or a private school and we don't always get the requests for records. So, we don't know where some students are. So, we're, we're still looking though. We're still trying to find those three ninth graders. But for the most part, our changes were youngsters that moved out of town and we had one, two, three, four homeschool students, requests for homeschool. We also had some completers and we, we had two summer completers, I'm sorry, three summer completers. And we had a couple of charter schools moved to charter school. And we also had one who went to Job Corps. As you know, that's, that can fulfill their graduation requirements. So, we're keeping a close eye on the youngsters up there with, along with Tim and his staff to be able to monitor the numbers for students.
Okay. Any questions with regards to enrollments? Thank you. Superintendent, we'll move on to calendars.
Yeah. This month's calendars, obviously, you know where we are today and tomorrow is Election Day, canvas voting. I believe that Jack is not, the negotiations committee, I think he was going to postpone that meeting. We'll get some information out to you tomorrow. He mentioned it like, tonight and I saw him briefly.
Is that the one tomorrow?
Yeah, that's the one on Wednesday.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
The negotiations, yeah.
Wednesday, thank you.
You know, we're just started negotiations with CEOPA, so the, our administrative assistants. So, we don't have a lot to offer to give to that committee for deliberation. So, he asked that it wait. The following week, you have executive committee and instructional committee, school board work session on the 15th. That, I, please note, I'd like that to be six o'clock. That's a better time for, you know, families to get here and be part of listening. That is a work session again. And we will have a brief presentation of updates because, you know, we constantly, the information is, continues to come in. And so, we want to update you on that. And so, that meeting will start at six o'clock here. Following week, city and community relations. And then we have our Thanksgiving break on the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. Following week, we'll have policy. And then on 28th is a, it's, it's a, it's actually a film, Chasing Childhood documentary. It's supported by Boston College. Commissioner of Education asked if he could use the facility up at the high school, the auditorium, to show that film. So, we will all be attending that film. Please join us if you'd like. But I wanted to put it on the calendar. You might be interested in it. December, special school board meeting on the 6th. You've identified that as a, you have a meeting on the 4th, your regular board meeting, on the December board meeting. And then on the 6th, you have your meeting where you, your agenda item is the decision around the land option for the middle school.
Is that going to be at 6:00, 2:00?
Yes. Yep. All, I made a note to myself, just to remind you, committees 5:30, full board 6:00. If we keep to that schedule, we won't be confused. Full board 6:00, committees 5:30. Except, except executive committee. Instructional committee on the 11th. You have your board gathering on the 13th where we'll have a chance to enjoy some cooked meals by our career and technical youngsters that are in the culinary arts program and also take a chance to honor some people that have provided service to the district on that night. So, it's at the high school at 6:00. Following that is, in December, is executive committee and policy and we will have that negotiations on the 20th. And then we have the holiday recess. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, superintendent. And I speak for the rest of the board when I say that I like seeing our Tuesdays and Thursdays free this month and next month.
For now.
Our Tuesdays and Thursdays free this month and next month.
And, and you know, I thought a lot about that. You know, this meeting's a little shorter than the week, than normal. And because you put a lot of time into your committee meetings and your special meetings. And so, I, you know, I have to try to balance that for you if I can. But there's a lot of things going on. So, it's hard.
Okay. Very good. Does anyone else have any other business to bring up to the board?
Can I have to make sort of an alu announcement?
Yeah, sure.
So, two longtime staff members of the Concord School District passed away in the past 10 days. One was Rusty Coffrin. He was a math teacher at Concord High School, a track and cross country coach. He worked in the district from 1983 until he retired in 2007 with brain cancer and then has spent the rest of his adult life fighting it. And then Linda May. Linda was a music teacher at Walker School way back in the 90s. We taught, I taught with her there. Then she went to Runlet and, and the high school and she was the choir director at Concord High School for a long while. Really phenomenal human being. Also, long, tedious, slow death of cancer. She died just a few days ago. But that's 40 years of teaching between those two people. So, I just figured they deserved a little...
Rusty was also a school board member.
That's right.
I was going to say, I was going to, I was going to add to that there...
I forgot that little piece.
Rusty Coffrin served on this school board.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we are sorry for his loss as well as for...
Thanks for bringing it up, Barbara.
Yeah, that's a lot of teaching.
Both of, both of them will be missed. So, thank you. Thank you. The, we will, I guess I should ask, is there any further public comment that anyone would like to make at this time? We didn't use up our full 30 minutes.
Liam McLeod was passed away last week as well, as a health teacher.
No.
Thank you very much for bringing that up and for, that was Liam McLeod passed away last week. We didn't have a microphone on the person that said that and we are, you know, deeply saddened and sorry for that loss as well.
That's like 35, a long time in the district, like over 30 years.
Yeah. So, they will be missed. So, they will be missed. Thank you.
I understand.
We have, not seeing any public comment. We do have a non-public session, and after the non-public session, we will go straight to adjournment. But I do want to say one last thing, and that is that this school board is answerable just as the city council is to the ultimate power, which is the public. And tomorrow is elections, and I encourage everyone to go out for vote. There are three school board positions that are up for election, and I wish well to everyone who is running and thank them for their, you know, selfless dedication because this is not your best-paying job in the city of Concord, let's just say. But we really appreciate everyone's dedication to that. I wish everyone luck. And I also would reflect, I think, the board by saying, please, go out and vote. It's important. It's, you're the most critical thing you can do to influence this board as well as the city council. So, thank you, everyone. We will stop our transmission at this point, and we will just adjourn.
We make a motion?
Oh, yeah. Do we have...
I will move that we enter non-public session under RSA 91A3C Personnel Matters.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cardo. This is a roll call vote, Ms. Hastings.
Okay. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yep.
Yes. Mr. Weinberg?
Aye.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yeah.
Ms. Meeker?
Yes.
Mr. Cardo?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
So, we are in non-public. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Free recess?